All right, well, welcome to the City of Iowa City on this 12th day of July 2022. This is the City of Iowa City's formal meeting, and it is just after 6:00 PM. And I'm going to start with roll call, please.
Alter.
Here.
Fergus.
Here.
Harmsen.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Weiner.
Here.
All right, well, we have a full room today. Really appreciate everybody coming into your City Hall, so welcome. Our first, our second item is special presentations, and this is 2A. And this is special recognition for the Iowa City Fire Department and Johnson County Ambulance. And we're going to invite Chief Lyon up. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, council, mayor and council. Tonight I share with you a special event. It's a saving of a life. This life-saving moment is a direct result of the professionalism and of our members and of Johnson County Ambulance in working together. Ambulance Director Fiona Johnson is with us tonight. She's going to help hand out some awards, as well as Deputy Chief Durnberg. On May 25th, 2022, Iowa City Engine 4 and the Johnson County Ambulance were called to a local convenience store regarding a sick person. While responding, they soon realized that the incident was much worse, and it was indeed a cardiac arrest. At that time, Engine 1 and the Battalion Chief were also added to the event to help out at the scene. Responding crews arrived on the scene three minutes and 25 seconds later, so they got there nice and quick after being dispatched, and confirmed that the patient was indeed in cardiac arrest and began CPR. After the patient received additional medical treatment, folks, personnel there, taken to the hospital for further care. On June 17th, 2022, the patient stopped by Station 4 to thank the members of the Fire Department. That patient is with us tonight. Connie is here in the room with us, and she'll come up here in a moment to help hand out some commemorative coins. The timing of the call on May 25th was truly significant. Thirty minutes before the call came out, members of Engine 4 had just completed CPR and AED refresher training. At the same time, when the call was received, the Engine 1 crew was heading to Station 4 to receive CPR training as well. So needless to say, the timing was quite ironic. So tonight, we're going to recognize some members with certificates and commemorative coins. Chief Fiona, Connie? Would you like me to come up there or stay down? The first member we'd like to introduce tonight is Lieutenant Todd Irwin, Engine 4. Firefighter Larry White, Engine 4. Firefighter Glenn Paul, Engine 4. The acting lieutenant from Engine 1, Matt Bojan, is unable to be with us this evening, as well as David Arch from Engine 1. Firefighter James McDonald, Engine 1. Battalion Chief Zach Hickman. Johnson County Paramedic Wyatt Glassnap. And Johnson County Paramedic Matt Tracy. I believe it's super important that we recognize these events when they happen. All too often, the outcomes aren't nearly as positive as we'd like them to be. What was demonstrated with this event is that quick access to 911 and quick response times matter. All these folks gave their all so that Connie could go on and live a happy life. So, thank you for your time this evening.
Well, I want to thank each of you, especially you Connie, for sharing your story with us and being here tonight. Thanks to each of you. And I want to shake each of your hands as you leave this area. Thank you so much. Let's give them one more. And maybe council can stand up and join in? Can you give council? All right, great. Thank you all.
These chairs have wheels, you don't want to stand on those.
And we are on to item 3A, which is Rhodes versus Wade. And this will be read by our Mayor Pro Tim Alter.
Whereas, access to reproductive health care is critical to women's physical, psychological, and socioeconomic well-being. And whereas, the right to decide to have an abortion before viability has been United States Supreme Court precedent for nearly 50 years. And whereas, the recent United States Supreme Court majority opinion in Dobbs v. Jackson, Women's Health Organization overturned the constitutional right to abortion as recognized in Roe v. Wade and reaffirmed in Planned Parenthood of Southeastern Pennsylvania v. Casey. And whereas, arguably, the United States Supreme Court has not ruled against the human rights of so many Americans since its bad decisions in Dred Scott v. Sanford and Plessy v. Ferguson, where these decisions ignored the rights of the enslaved and supported Jim Crow laws. And whereas, abortions are a common part of health care, with one in four women in the United States having an abortion by the time they are 45 years old. And whereas, banning abortions doesn't reduce abortions, but does lead to worse public health outcomes. And whereas, Black women in the U.S. are three times as likely to die from a pregnancy-related cause than white women, and forcing birth will only further exacerbate these inequities in our community. And whereas, forced birth negatively impacts the physical, mental, emotional, social, and economic health of women, parents, and families at a time when currently there is no guaranteed parental leave, lack of economical health care, and a national childcare crisis. And whereas, the unfair burden of fighting for women's rights will likely fall, as our own Human Rights Commission notes, to, quote, "the coming generations who may now have to bear the burden of abdicating for and establishing comprehensive, inclusive reproductive rights in the face of multiple daunting challenges." Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the City of Iowa City agree all people have the ability to make medical decisions about their own body, and be it further resolved that the mayor and city council of the City of Iowa City support the rights of pregnant persons in the city to obtain access to the full spectrum of reproductive health care, including abortion care, therefore opposes the United States Supreme Court's majority opinion in Dobbs v. Jackson, Women's Health Organization. And be it further resolved that the mayor and city council of the City of Iowa City will support those who work to ensure access and availability of reproductive health services for the Iowa City community. And accepting this proclamation tonight is Stephanie Edmonds, who is a board member of the Emma Goldman Clinic.
Yes, please.
Hello, I just would like to thank the City of Iowa City for doing this proclamation on behalf of the Emma Goldman Clinic. We have been fighting for so many years to keep access available. And it really means a lot during this time to know that the City of Iowa City supports the women and all the patients at the Emma Goldman Clinic, including the ones who are coming to our state right now who cannot access that care elsewhere. So we thank you for this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you for all that you do. And council, if anyone wants to have a few words, you certainly can.
I just want to, I want to thank you. I want to thank the Emma Goldman Clinic for the work it has been doing for so many years. We have never before in the history of this country seen a fundamental right stripped from over half our population. So we need to continue to do this work and to recognize that this is, that this is health care, and this is, it will affect so many different aspects of our community, including our economy. I don't think people are even starting to grasp it yet, so. And the only other thing I would add is that we talked about Roe v. Wade. We did not talk about the Iowa case. The Iowa Supreme Court also stripped Iowans a week before that of a fundamental right under the Iowa Constitution, so it's sort of a double whammy for all pregnant persons and all who need the reproductive health care. So thank you again for the work you do.
Thank you.
I'd like to also thank you and your staff, past and present, for so many years. You've stood strong no matter what, and the supporters have been there, and I hope that can continue.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here today.
Yes, thank you for having me.
Yes. We're on to items number four through nine. Can I get, which is our consent calendar? Could I get a motion to approve, please? So moved.
Second, Taylor.
Moved by Harmsen, seconded by Taylor. Anyone from the public like to discuss an item that is within the consent calendar? If so, please come forth. And if you are online, please raise your hand, and I'll acknowledge you. And I also want to let people know that they have three minutes to speak. Seeing no one. Counsel discussion. Is this an item on the consent calendar? Okay. Counsel discussion. Roll call, please. Fergus.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number nine is community comment. Oh, sorry. Item number 10 is community comment. This is an opportunity for folks to come up and talk about any item that is not on our agenda. You'll have up to three minutes to speak, and we'll go at about 30 minutes. So if anyone would like to come forth, please come to the podium. At the back of the room, there is a sign-in sheet. If people wanted to sign in and place that sign-in in the bucket, otherwise, you can sign in at the podium. Welcome.
Thank you very much for letting me just speak for a few minutes. I missed the opportunity to comment to the council on the RAL pool issue, and I know the last meeting had a lot of discussion about that.
Will you state your name and where you're from? I should have stated that.
Yes, of course. My name is Mary Russell Curran, and I live in Iowa City.
Thank you.
And so I have been here for about five years. I've enjoyed living in the central area of the city, and I think that the RAL pool, in my understanding for those years, has been well-used. And unfortunately, I believe a lot of hours have had to be cut lately. And I believe also that the, it may be that the city is, or the commission is not actually tracking the real numbers of people who show up to use the pool. And if hours are cut and lap lanes are cut, it's a self-fulfilling prophecy. So I would just think it's a vital part of the downtown and wanted to urge you to do what you can to keep it and improve it so that people in the downtown area can have the benefit of a facility like that, especially with the warm water that is conducive to so much pleasure for many people. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address a topic that's not on our agenda? Welcome.
I am Michelle.
Yes, and please.
In Iowa City.
I remember to sign in and, yeah.
Right. Very close to here. Both my children took swimming lessons at Robert A. Lee. It's an important facility, not just for high-rises that may utilize it, but a central location for many neighborhoods that is accessible by public transportation. So children can get to Robert A. Lee by themselves safely on public transportation or by bike. That is not something they would be able to do if they were downtown or north side and then bike over to Mercer or City Park. It's just much more accessible than getting to City Pool. So the, you know, future swimmers, it's extremely important. We only bemoan this when somebody falls into the river and doesn't come up again. So swimming lessons are extremely important. A public facility that's in really good condition should not be demolished. We need three locations. It's ridiculous when our town is growing, and most of the growth is downtown, that it should be demolished or otherwise repurposed. So I would also agree with Mary Curran and several of my friends who take Aquasize here and/or other lessons in this center, in a Robert A. Lee Center. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Will you repeat your name for the record?
Pam Michelle.
Great, thank you. Welcome.
Hi, hola, mi nombre es Ninosca Campo y soy de la organización Escucha Mi Voz.
I'll be translating. My name is Sophie Benegas. This is Ninosca Campo, and she's from the organization Escucha Mi Voz.
Resido en el condado de Johnson, y yo fui elegible para el programa de asistencia directa para un cheque de estímulo directo de 1400 dólares.
I applied and received, I was eligible for the stimulus check from Johnson County of $1,400.
Pero más de 319 personas recibieron un mensaje ahora, el cual no fueron seleccionadas para esta ayuda directa.
But 319 people who were deemed eligible received a message today that they would not be receiving a stimulus check.
Lo cual las están dejando excluidas nuevamente.
And they are being excluded, as they were before, excluded again.
Y se me hace injusto para mi persona, y no es de mi gracia que unas personas fueron elegibles y otras no.
And it doesn't seem just or right to me that some people were deemed eligible and others were not.
Porque ustedes saben que el condado y la ciudad aprobaron 3.5 millones de dólares para 2,500 trabajadores excluidos y esenciales.
Because you guys already know that the city council in the city allocated more than, or allocated $3.5 million for these checks.
Para darle dinero a 2,500 personas, 2,238 recibieron el mes pasado que habían sido elegibles.
That money was supposed to go to 2,500 people. 2,238 people were deemed eligible to receive those checks.
Pero ahora resulta que solo 1,919 fueron seleccionadas.
But only 1,919 were selected to get those. So 1,919 out of the 2,238 that were eligible.
Entonces esto no está bien porque Iowa City todavía tiene más de un millón de dólares que puede ser de beneficio implementar para darle a estas 319 personas que están siendo excluidas.
This isn't right, and this doesn't make sense, because Iowa City still has more than half of a million dollars that were supposed to be allocated, allocated to these individuals that was not allocated.
Porque si a 3.5 millones de dólares le quitamos 2.7 millones de dólares, ¿dónde está el dinero restante para que se le dé dinero a todas estas personas?
If $3.5 million were allocated and only 2.7 were given out to members, where is the rest of the money that was promised to the excluded workers?
Entonces es justo que tomen en cuenta y le den a estas 319 personas que están siendo excluidas de este beneficio. Gracias.
And so the just thing would be that to the 319 people who were deemed eligible but did not win the lottery, be given the rest of the money that was allocated for this fund to them, and thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic or address a topic that is not on our agenda?
Hola, muy buenas tardes a todos.
Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Janet Colindres.
My name is Janet Colindres.
Vivo en Iowa City, y también la razón por la que estoy acá es, me mandaron un mensaje la vez pasada que había sido elegible, pero lamentablemente hoy recibí un texto que no salía elegible.
I'm here for the same reason. I am one of the people who was eligible, who received a message last week that I was eligible to receive the stimulus, but then I got a message today that I would not be receiving one.
So trabajo en un restaurante, soy preparadora, pero no gano mucho dinero y sería de mucha ayuda.
I work in a restaurant preparing food, and I don't make a lot of money, and it would be really helpful to get that money.
Sería de mucha ayuda poder calificar nuevamente. Muchas gracias.
It would be really helpful to be able to use that money. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. You, oh, sir, oh, okay. Yes, welcome.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Delcy Gonzales.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Delcy Gonzales.
Y vengo por la misma razón que hoy recibí el mensaje diciendo que no fui elegible para el cheque de estímulo y...
I also got the same message today that I would not be receiving a stimulus check.
Y también se me hace muy injusto que a muchas personas de nosotros que de verdad lo necesitamos, seamos excluidos del cheque, y pues yo creo que merecemos una ayuda porque no a todos nos dan ayudas a cada poco.
And it would make a lot of sense to me, and it seems just to me that those people who were excluded once again to receive the checks, because in reality, we needed a lot. And...
Y también quisiera que me tomaran en cuenta como persona que pudiera ser elegible porque se me haría de mucho beneficio. Yo no trabajo, y si ustedes no me preguntan, pero cada uno tiene una necesidad diferente, y pues necesitamos ese dinero que hace falta para las personas que nos quedamos sin ese cheque.
And we didn't receive any other type of stimulus before. And as a person who is unable to work, this would be, it would be priceless to be able to use this money to be able to live and to not be excluded from, once again, from those who did receive the check.
Y eso fue todo. Espero que por favor nos tomen en cuenta. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, and I really hope you guys listen to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Nolberto Velazquez.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Nolberto Velazquez.
Vengo por la misma razón de, del cheque que, la ayuda que pedimos la vez pasada me mandaron mensajes que sí fui aceptable, y ahora resulta que no.
I am also one of the people who got a message last week that my application was acceptable, and I got a message today that I would not be receiving any funds.
Pues quisiera saber si nos puede ayudar del cheque que nos podemos ser elegible todos o...
I just want you guys to know that this is an immense help to us and that we really need it, those of us who applied.
Pues sería mi única palabra para, para todos.
And that's my final word for all of you.
Gracias.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hola, muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Brizny Garcia. Vengo por mí y mi esposo Jeremy Cruz. A nosotros no llegó la notificación que fuimos aceptados, pero ahora en la mañana vimos el mensaje y a ninguno de los dos nos ha caído, este, que fuimos aceptados. Pienso que todos los que nos inscribimos para esta oportunidad tenemos el derecho de poder ser excluidos en este paquete para nosotros que necesitamos y tenemos hijos.
Hi, I'm here for the same reason that for my husband and I were both, got the message last week that we were eligible, and the message today that we would not be getting anything. I wanted, want you to know that we need this money, and especially because we have children.
Y si ustedes por favor reconsideran a las personas que nos hemos quedado fuera en podernos ayudar, sería una gran ayuda para todos nosotros. Gracias.
And if there's anything you can do to keep, to be able to help us, it would be, it would be an immense help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hola, buenas tardes.
Welcome. And we're going to make, will you make sure that they sign their name and put it in the basket? Thank you. And there should be some stickers on the back podium as well.
Hola, buenas tardes.
Welcome.
Yo fui también aceptada en el programa de estímulo de los excluidos trabajadores de Iowa City.
Hi, good afternoon. I was also one of the people who was accepted, and my application was accepted, and I am an excluded worker of Iowa City.
Solamente puedo decir de que soy una madre soltera de tres niños, y sería en una buena forma de que pudieran retomar el caso y también incluir a las personas que hemos sido sacadas del programa.
I am a single mother of three children, and I wanted to let you guys know that this is a great form and a great way to help us, those of us who were excluded from government stimulus checks, especially those of us who were excluded again after this first round of checks that were given by the city.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address? And please give your name and the city.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Jordi Pérez Escalante, y vivo en Coral Beach, Iowa.
¿Cómo se llama?
Jordi.
Jordi. Hi, my name is Jordi, and I...
¿A dónde vivo?
In Corralville.
In Corralville.
Bueno, estoy aquí por la misma razón que, bueno, en el mensaje, bueno, recibí un mensaje que fui elegible para el cheque de los 1,400, pero hoy en la mañana recibí otro mensaje que me decía que, que no fui elegible para recibir el cheque de los 1,400.
I am another one of the individuals who got the message last week that I was eligible to receive the $1,400 check, and I also got a message today that I would not be receiving any of those funds.
Bueno, y entonces, bueno, yo soy un padre de cuatro niños, entonces, bueno, para mí sería bueno que, bueno, que sería bueno elegible para recibir los 1,400, que ustedes, bueno, que Dios, Dios les ponga, les toca... les toque el corazón y decir bueno les vamos a dar los, a las 300 personas les vamos a dar el cheque otra vez.
I also have a family. I'm a father and I work hard and I just hope that you can listen to us and God can touch your hearts and help us out, those 300 of us that did not receive the, the funds and were eligible.
Porque las 300 personas a lo mejor son padres de familia como yo que a lo mejor estaban esperando los 1,400 pero al ver el mensaje dijeron pues les, ellos dijeron pues no fui elegible como fue una lotería.
And most of the other 300 people are working parents like me and were told that they were eligible and that their applications were accepted and were waiting on that fund, were waiting on that fund and just now received the message today that they would not be receiving it.
Bueno, eso es todo. Muchas gracias y que Dios los bendiga.
That's, that's all. Thank you and God bless you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hola, buenas, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Benancio Maynor Morales Díaz y vivo en Coral.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is, what?
Benancio.
Benancio and I live in Coralville.
Y también estoy aquí por la misma razón que, que a mí me cayó un mensaje que no, mi cheque no es el, el, el mío no es elegible y por la misma razón estoy aquí que no es justo que, que 300 personas no, no sean elegibles.
I received the same message as everyone before and I just wanted to come and say that it's not just for that 300 people were not given their checks even though they were eligible.
Y por eso estoy aquí por la misma razón que tal vez nos pueden ayudar en volver a tomar en cuenta, a tomarnos en cuenta.
And that's why I'm here to hopefully convince you guys to take another look and to, to give us the, the money that we were promised. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Dave Goodner. I'm with Iowa City Catholic Worker House. We knew that the lottery program was bad public policy that was basically invented by technocrats who have castor oil where their heart and blood should be. But to have over 172 out of 319 rejected applicants be residents of Iowa City and be deemed to lose the lottery when Iowa City is not even spending the 1.5 million that you all committed to make sure that negatively impacted people in our community receive the $1,400 checks that they need, that goes beyond public policy to a broken promise. And so I don't understand how most of the people in this room, Iowa City residents, lost the lottery when the city of Iowa City has not even spent all of the money that you committed to spending. How in the world can that happen and what are you going to do to fix it? Because we know who these people are. The county has already vetted them. They, they're deemed eligible. They've proven all their paperwork. At least 172 out of 319 are Iowa City residents. You have the money. It's money you've already promised to commit to these people. All you have to do is give the money to the, to the people like you promised. So let's make that happen and fix this right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is George Tresnick, Iowa City. I spoke at the last meeting about the proposed closing of the Robert A. Lee Center.
Can you pour the mic down, please? Pour the mic down. Thank you.
Since then, things have gotten more confused. I swam about one day since then because the pool is closed. They claimed for repairs and it was supposed to open Saturday and they said that, no, it's closed till Wednesday and nobody could give me any word today whether it was gonna be open. And I tried to talk to several staff members. Nobody there knows anything whether, whether it's going to be open. Short, the consultants mentioned that one of the problems was, or they implied that one of the problems was a shortage of lifeguards and it's obvious there's an excess of lifeguards. And since then, the hours have been cut. And it makes no sense to claim that you have low usage and cut the hours in the pool. When it was open, it was totally unused. It sat idle for the, most of the day. And I'm sure other people are in my, my shoes. I was going swimming every day. Now, when I wasn't swimming, I increased my exercise time in the, by, doubled it in the exercise room there, but it still doesn't have the same effect as swimming, the, on, on blood sugar and all that. So I'm wondering who, who, what, what the process is to determine that they have to close the pool or that needs repairs or whatever. If, if the, if, if that goes through the consultants or whether that's Public Works or whatever. But it would be nice if there was some clarification if it's not gonna be open so that people would know. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Welcome. Hello.
My name is James Knapp. I live at 528 Rundell Street. Years ago, the city of Iowa City impaired the flow of Ralston Creek operating on an area that was crossed by Rundell Street and Muscatine Avenue, which now causes us to be in the flood plain. This was supposed to be taken care of in April. It isn't. I just got a notice that I've got another 300 and some dollars to pay flood insurance on my property. And everyone else that lives along Rundell Street, if they have a mortgage, they have to pay 300 and some dollars for the flood plain which the city of Iowa City should have repaired and they have not done this. At one time they said they were gonna do it in April. They have not done it. They now say, well, we're waiting for FEMA. Well, that doesn't help us people that have to pay $300 for flood insurance when the city's the one that caused the problem in the beginning. So what are you gonna do?
Yep. Now is an opportunity for you to speak. Any concerns with council?
Well, I just hope that the city's going to do something about it because they were supposed to in April and now we're already into July, almost August. And I got a notice that we have another 300 and some dollar flood insurance to pay on our house. And the city's caused this problem impairing the flow of Ralston Creek and the city should repair that problem and so we don't have to do that. Is anybody going to respond?
Yep. We can certainly connect with you at a different time.
Okay.
But thank you.
And who will I take my issue to?
We'll probably have you just contact the city, city clerk's office.
We'll reach out to you, Mr. Knapp.
That was supposed to be taken care of by April, but now we're into July and I get another notice and everybody along Ralston Creek, around Rundell Street is gonna have to pay flood insurance unless their house is totally paid for and they don't have that. And they don't need the flood insurance. Ralston Creek's a problem. The city was going to repair it. They should repair it. They should get out there and do it as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Welcome. Thanks.
Good evening, council. My name is Nicholas Tyson. I am a very recent resident of the city of Iowa City. I wanted, I had a lot of things that I wanted to talk about tonight, but you limit these things to three minutes. So I guess I want to focus on the issue with the Excluded Workers Fund because I just did some brief, I just did some napkin math while I was sitting in my chair over there and the $750,000 that the county is set to return to you is actually more than enough to cover the, what is it, 319 individuals who need to be covered. Like, and as David said just now, you, they've already been vetted, they've already been identified. Like all of the actual logistical work has been done. And from what I recall, when this body was still meeting back in the senior center and was discussing how much money to give to the county in order to support this fund, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was Councilor Burgess who said that you all wanted to do this precisely because you wanted to include as many people as possible. And so now we're in a situation where it is entirely in your court where you could fix a grievous harm that the county is perpetrating on these individuals. What's fascinating about Iowa City as a location is that it has this weird reputation as this extremely wealthy and/or bougie place. But what's odd about Iowa City that actually the data reveal is that of the five largest cities in the state, it actually has the lowest median income. Also has the highest poverty rate and it's not even close. So the thing is, the reason why that's the case is because what you have in this county and especially in the city is extreme wealth inequality. And the individuals who are being excluded from these checks are precisely the people who make your bougie lifestyles possible. Every single person sitting up on that dais doesn't actually have to deal with the bullshit that an average working class person has to deal with on a day-to-day basis. So if you actually have the moral core that you claim to have, you really should be doing the right thing and saying F the county and just pay these people yourselves. That's the right thing to do. I don't really have a whole lot of hope that you're going to do it, but that is the right thing to do. And since I do actually have a little bit of time left, I would like to address the Parks and Rec situation. Because from what I recall, I, I don't remember who it was, but back when the issue of the winter shelters was being discussed, we heard time and time again that that is not a service that is traditionally provided by the city. And here, when you're talking about rec services, this is a service traditionally provided by the city and you're just going to cut it. So I guess the question is, how much do the poor and lower income residents of this city have to suck up in order for you to feel okay with the rules? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address a topic that is not on our agenda? Welcome.
Hi, council.
Hi, my name's Keen Zymit. I'm a resident of Iowa City and I'm here to give USG announcements. Undergraduate student government, if you don't know what that is. And due to an increase in on-campus housing demand, Park Lawn Residence Hall will be reopened after closing in 2017. The building will have the capacity to house an additional 137 students. Additionally, tuition will be raised by 4.2% this coming year and so many students will be facing housing as well as food insecurities. USG is excited to work with the council on all of that. We can, to support mutual aid efforts in order to curb these negative impacts. And then Women's Rights March was held at the Pinnacle Crest on June 24th to defend bodily autonomy and as a response to the recent overturned Roe v. Wade case.
In light of the constitutional and, or Iowa constitutional as well as SCOTUS actions against menstruating individuals and their access to abortion, USG stands with the victims of these actions and those that have fought in years past to make healthcare a human right. USG hopes to see actions by the state and city to financially support healthcare providing clinics such as the Emma Goldman Clinic. Additionally, USG will be keeping an eye out for any city efforts to fully fund the promised funds for excluded workers. Wage theft is already a national crisis and an Iowa City crisis. When support is offered to our community, one day it is cruel to change your mind seven days later. We hope the council will provide an answer to the delays and vagueness in the fund status. And then finally, after taking some summer time off, we will be having our first USG executive meeting later this week, which we will be able to then thereafter relay more information about our priorities this year such as night and daytime security on and off campus, waste reduction, sustainable transportation and more. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address a topic that is not on our agenda? Seeing no one, I'm gonna close community com-
We do have one online.
So they're not showing up? All right, sorry. I didn't see it. I'm gonna call Dan. Welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sorry I wasn't able to see it on my previous screen, but now I see it.
You're totally good. Um, first I would like to say that it's important for the city to fully fund, fund excluded workers, something that the Iowa City and Johnson County governments have said that they will do, but they failed at doing so. The county is reimbursing over $500,000 to Iowa City despite the fact that numerous Iowa City residents who have been cleared by the county for payments and who had not received stimulus as originally have now lost out on the county lottery. This is unacceptable. Um, I, I fully, I mean, I don't, I don't know what y'all will do. I hope you guys do the right thing and fight for these people to get their stimulus payments because it's obvious that you have the money to do so. And if you don't, I mean, you're just gonna live up to all of the bad things that have ever been said about you. Regarding the Roe v. Wade proclamation earlier, I would just like to point out that council truly cares about reproductive freedoms. I urge each of you to contact Janet Linus and Rachel Zimmerman Smith, who's gonna probably replace Linus. Urge them to proclaim that their office will not prosecute abortion providers or patients. If they don't, our community could be a haven for reproductive healthcare. Lastly, I'm here to talk about ICPD Officer Jeff Reinhardt. Earlier this summer, he was captured on video beating a tiny woman who was hand-tuffed and he did so without justification. Now this has been revealed that his dubious actions have, in another case, have cost the city of Iowa City over $190,000. This is because he wrongfully and maliciously detained a man with no just cause, but rather because Reinhardt pretended in his reports that the man was intoxicated. How much more are you gonna take from this person? I mean, not even morally, but, but financially, Jeff Reinhardt is costing the city money. If he is not fired, council and city staff are sending a message that you are okay with your constituents being beaten and wrongfully imprisoned and more than that, you are okay pissing money down the drain. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't see anyone else on, online, so we will move forth to our next item. Item number 11, which is planning and zoning matters. 11A zoning code amendment, various historic preservation code changes. Ordinance amend in Title 14, zoning of the Iowa City Code to clarify code language related to historic preservation. I'm gonna open the public hearing and we're gonna start with staff. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Danielle Sisman, Neighborhood and Development Services. This agenda item is another minor code change of ordinance. It's similar to the one that you heard last time, which had a variety of other minor code changes included in it. These are all ones that relate to historic preservation. So they were handled separately because they were routed to the Historic Preservation Commission for recommendation as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission. So they're trailing behind those code changes by just a little bit. There are four code changes included in this ordinance. I'll go through them briefly. As I said, they all relate to historic preservation and have received a recommendation from that group as well as the state's historic preservation coordinator. So the four changes include one change, which has to do with a clarification only. Again, these are minor code changes. These are not meant to change the function or the intent of the codes. They're simply ways for staff to adopt code changes to make them more clear about what we're doing with the code change, with the codes themselves. This change would basically remain consistent with staff's interpretation of provisions that allow the Board of Adjustment to grant special exceptions for properties that are designated historic and clarifying that when we sit, talk about historic landmarks and properties located in historic preservation districts, they share the same zoning designation, which is OHD. And so those, that is the purview of the Board of Adjustment to, to grant the waivers through special exceptions to. That's what we've done all along, but we just want to clarify based on the zoning designation that those two things are the same thing. So again, just clarifying how we're currently operating. The second code change has to do with removing the list of local landmarks and historic districts and conservation districts itemized in the code language itself. Those are displayed on a map and are recorded in the ordinances when they are zoned, so it's unnecessary for them to be in the code language itself. And in fact, we don't do such a great job of keeping that list up to date, so it's not actually as accurate as the other items. So we're proposing- So we're proposing to remove that from the code. Those properties would still remain zoned as they are, they just would be found and referenced in the maps and the ordinances. The third change is to add abbreviation for a zoning district that already exists but for some reason didn't list its code abbreviation. So like all of the zoning districts, they have a name, but they also have an abbreviation. So in this case, we're adding the OCD abbreviation for the conservation district overlay. And the last change that's included in this amendment is to just clarify the public notice procedures that we go through. We have a set of procedures, but they're not itemized clearly in the code itself, so that would be included there. And then also clarifying that we're not going to route things to the state Historic Preservation Office unless the state Historic Preservation Office is going to comment on them. We've been sending them everything that we did, and they don't necessarily comment on everything, they just want the things they want to see. So this code change would clarify we're only going to send them those things. As I said, this went through review by Historic Preservation and Planning Commission, and they're both recommending adoption of the code changes tonight. I'm happy to answer questions.
Great. Any questions for Danielle? Thank you. And any questions from anyone in the public? All right, welcome.
Yep, thank you. My name's Kevin Boyd. I think you all know that I chair the Historic Preservation Commission. I come tonight with two things related to this agenda item. The first is about process. The city code outlines the Historic Preservation Commission's mandate. It says in part, "The commission shall," not "may," "further the efforts of historic preservation in the city by making recommendations to the city council and city commissions and boards on preservation issues." The city staff at Development Services initially decided that three of these four items related to historic preservation cleanup code should not come before our committee, our commission, despite what city code requires. I happened to read the planning and zoning agenda where these were originally posted, saw items related to historic preservation, and thought it may have been an oversight. Yet when I reached out to Development Services, the response was pushback. It was only after I wrote a letter directly to the Planning and Zoning Commission that the request got addressed. But as often is the case, many eyes on the proposal made it better. The discussion at our meeting helped identify an issue. Fellow commissioners were asked where the list of local landmarks would exist if these changes were made. It was only really in the zoning maps and the ordinance, not the easiest place for the public to find them. Development Services thought they existed elsewhere and was incorrect. So the commission request that was not presented tonight was to include the list on the city website along with the other maps of the historic districts, a simple solution to better inform the public. Which brings me to my second item, a request. I ask that you wait on the second consideration of this item, move the stuff forward tonight before second consideration, until that list of local landmarks is included on the city website. Our commission has often requested updates to the historic preservation website with no staff follow-up. We're often told that our commission requests for staff action, even small action like this, is only acted on if council directs staff. So your direction and a deadline would be good to ensure the public has access to the list of local landmarks. I know this list was just updated internally in late May, early June for the annual mailing they do to those property owners. So formatting and putting it on the website should be pretty straightforward. I think there's three weeks before your next meeting when second consideration would be. I hope you honor our request. I appreciate your time and consideration and service as always. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one. I'm going to close, I'm going to close the public hearing. And could I get a motion to give first consideration? So moved, Thomas.
Second, Weiner.
All right. And council discussion.
Out of curiosity, how much would it, how much would it take to get the list that Mr. Boyd was talking about up on the city website?
I'll have to check if what we have is updated, but I'm looking at a list on the website right now, so maybe it's an issue of whether that's up to date or not. Generally speaking, it's not difficult to add text to a website, but I'm looking at a list right now.
All right, any other comments? Roll call, please.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 11B, rezoning south of Lehman Avenue, west of Sycamore Greenway. Ordinance conditionally, rezona in approximately 4.7 acres of property located south of Lehman Avenue and west of the Sycamore Greenway from interim development multifamily residential to neighborhood public. And this is, could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Weiner.
Second, Alter.
All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 12 is settlement agreement approval, resolution approving the settlement of pending litigation. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Alter.
Second, Burgess.
All right, anyone from the public like to address this topic? Welcome.
Good evening again, Council. It's hard to know where to actually begin with this issue because there have been so many incidents.
And would you give your name?
I'm sorry, Nicholas Tyson. I am a resident of Iowa City. The same is true as it was before. It's hard to know where to begin with this, but much has been made of one of the officers involved, Reinhardt. In fact, a lot has been said on social media and so forth. But I actually want to draw your attention to the other officer involved in this situation, Travis Graves. For the, wait, sorry, Councilor Harmsen, are you confused?
Are we on the zoning issue?
You said 12, the settlement agreement.
Oh, I'm sorry. I beg your pardon. Yes, I was confused.
So could I ask the chair to reset my time, please?
You can continue.
Well, I would like to have my time reset because it was taken by Councilor Harmsen.
You can continue, and we'll give you a few more seconds.
Okay, thank you. So in the case of Officer Graves, he was responsible for assaulting a black teenager in 2015 in the very rec center that you all want to close down the pool at. At the time, in fact, there was a huge demonstration right out there, and I know this because I was there. Involved a lot of people who now seem, well, actually strangely cared a lot about police brutality at the time, and suddenly when they got into elected office, stopped caring. We're not going to talk about certain county supervisors. But the issue is, is that that happened in 2015 when he assaulted a kid. And then two years later, the issue that is underlying this particular settlement happened. You kept him on for two more years so that he could pull some bullshit again. And the thing is, this is a pattern of behavior with ICPD. I mean, I know none of you give a crap about what happened to Chris Williams when, I think it was as many as 10 local law enforcement basically beat the crap out of him. And it was so egregious that a federal judge literally referred to it as a case of walking while black. And so the thing is, I wonder at what point this city is actually going to become serious about these issues? Because the thing is, every time one of these officers does something, we pay for it. Literally, the city is going to have to pay for this. Travis Graves doesn't have to have liability insurance to cover, and in fact, he's literally covered by a legal doctrine that prevents any real liability from going his direction. So the thing is, I would think that as great fiduciaries of the city's finances, that you would actually care about these things when they happen. Because, as I said, we end up having to pay for them. And that's all I really have to say about that. I just, I know you didn't give a crap about the protests, I know you didn't give a crap about any of the things that happened in the summer of 2020. But I would think that you would at least care about the money.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 13 is city council committee appointments. And 13A is Community Violence Intervention Initiative Appointment. This is a motion, could I get a motion to approve one council member? Well, I guess we'll wait for the motion. So this is approving one council member to the Community Violence Intervention Initiative. And now council discussion. I will just say that this is something that I've been hearing about a little bit, about the, they've already been in operation a while, and they have some initiatives that, one, they have some money that the county put aside, over a million dollars, to maybe help with some of the initiatives that are created amongst this group. I know that our police, someone from our police also is involved in this group, I believe it's the police chief.
We have several members of the police department that are active on the committee.
Yeah. As well as other, I know the county is on there, and I would like to be considered if council would support me being the representative and appointee, but I don't know who else is interested.
Actually, Sean Harmsen and I both had a brief discussion, saying that we were both interested, but we didn't want to arm wrestle it so that we felt it was best to put it to council, so perhaps we'll just add you in the mix and we can decide.
Yeah, I certainly support, yeah, I certainly support our council having an active participation and then coming back. This is a, you know, this is an issue that I've spoken on, and others have as well many times, about the violence and the gun violence in not just our community, but communities all across the country. And so, you know, I would be fine supporting another council member. If we were looking for somebody to jump in there, I'd be happy to do that as well.
Sure.
Same. I actually was, it was just a cool moment because we were at the diversity market, and actually Kevin Burt was playing, and he talked to me for a little bit, and he said, "This is exactly what, you know, community building is and how you build a healthy neighborhood." And he just, he sort of put to voice in a very concise way about saying, "This is what makes a community unique, it's what makes a community feel invested in itself and neighborhoods." And so I've been a little involved with some of the Moms Demand Action and some of their community interrupters. And so anyway, it's, I just, I'm very much in favor of the fact that the county and a city are all working together to try and look at this from a more root cause kind of thing rather than Band-Aid. So I also am interested, however, I support strongly whoever ends up being representative.
And one of the reasons why I want to do it is because I think some of the solutions that they're talking about is really being out in the field and reaching community members, neighborhoods to try to figure out ways that individuals can combat what's happening in our community. We've known, we all know that there's been an increase, and some of these individuals are people of color. And how do we really engage with some of those community members if we're going to be actively asking them to participate? And so I do think that for this particular committee, when we're talking about some of that gun violence that's been happening within our city, I do think that I just have a little additional experience. I just, I just came back from Chicago too, which is a whole nother topic I won't talk about today. But I will tell you that it was a great experience in Chicago. Went to big events, and there was nothing that happened. I wish we could videotape that. But nevertheless, that's the only thing that I'll say, is that I think this will be really a well-rounded group and lots of initiatives. Now, of course, that doesn't mean that any one council that is appointed to this cannot seek and, you know, yeah, share ideas with other council members.
I think rather than each of us that might be interested in filling this position, duking it out or drawing straws, I think it would make sense that we would say that it would be appropriate for our mayor to represent us as a whole for this group. Know what others think?
I'm okay with that, and I look forward to proposals coming back, so things, concrete things from that and other sources that we can, you know, try and move the needle on this issue as much as we can as a council. So yeah, I would support that.
And I don't know the rules of this group, but we potentially could have some fill-ins. I don't, you know, I don't know what this group does if there's, if there's an absent, if you're absent.
I think that's right. In speaking with Rachel Zimmerman-Smith with the Johnson County Attorney's Office, who's heading up this group, I got the impression that unlike a number of entities to which this council appoints a single member and their, you know, voting rights and so forth, that this is built a little bit more in consensus. As Jeff mentioned, you know, there are a number of ICPD folks who are involved. Other agencies involved are the Juvenile Court Services, UAY, Adult Corrections, the Corralville PD, Johnson County Sheriff's Office, Abbey Center, the school district, several representatives from the school district, and Roy Sand Porter from the county. There are a couple of facilitators, I understand, from Cedar Rapids who are assisting. So in answer to your question, I think one representative would be great. That was their request in speaking with Rachel. And I think it would be wholly appropriate to send someone in your stead if our chosen representative is not able to make it.
And if that's agreeable, you know, I know two that are willing, I can-
There you go.
Sounds good.
Okay, but-
Do we need a motion to this effect?
We do need a motion to appoint to that person. We wouldn't need a motion to have a backup. You're certainly free to, if you want.
I would then make a motion to appoint Mayor Teague to be our representative to this body or to that other body.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Harmsen, seconded by Alter. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 14, council appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. We have two, three tonight. One is, 14A is the Climate Action Commission. Climate Action Commission, one makes it fill an expired term effective upon appointment through December 31st, 2023. And we can go at this one first.
At the outset, I'd just like to say that one of the applicants is no longer eligible. I reached out to Elena Swanson, who had said in her original application that she would be moving from Cedar Rapids to Iowa City. In fact, she's now in Des Moines, so.
Good to know. I found Matthew Walters' application interesting because he'd said he's been part for a couple of years of the Equity Working Group of the commission. I know they have separate little working groups that have been working in conjunction with them, so I thought he might be a good fit for the commission.
I would throw out there too that I thought, first of all, lots of great applications on this and then the other things we're considering tonight. In fact, it was almost an embarrassment of riches in terms of the kinds of background and enthusiasm that community members are willing, willing to bring to these, to these, to this commission work. But that said, one that did kind of stick out to me was, hopefully I pronounced this right, Ethan Turbin-Furman. And what jumped out to me is environmental safety coordinator at the U of I Environmental Health and Safety Office, you know, and also had mentioned some stuff in his application that I thought was interesting about doing prairie work. And, you know, we've had seen some more and more work that the city's done in some of our local prairie plantings, which I think are, you know, look quite beautiful as you drive around town, but also some residents who have tried to do some more prairie grasses to convert their, you know, traditional green lawns. So not, just throwing that out there, is somebody probably worth a second look by the rest of the council.
There were two or three applicants who were connected with the university, and it struck me that, A, that probably wasn't an accident, and B, that it's probably not a bad idea to have more interaction with the, with the, with the university on this topic in particular.
He was one of those, the question I had with him was, how strict are we on the Iowa City address? He has a Corralville address.
Oh, I missed that.
So-
Are we strict on that?
Yeah, so we would, well, we have two commissions that are not, you don't have to be a resident of Iowa City. Now, this might be one, except it may only be for, Kelly, help us, for those identified, because I know that we have Mid-Am.
Mid-Am and the university.
We have the university appointees. So this, this may not be limited.
I mean, just a minor detail because he's very well qualified and I echo while we're looking into this.
Thank you.
What your comment, because it was amazing, out of all the commissions, the ones we were looking at, anywhere from being in the community for only a few weeks to 40, 50 lifelong years. I mean, it was such a span there of the life experiences here and how long they've been in the community and really wanting seriously to serve the community. I was impressed, very impressed with each and every one of them.
Mayor.
So, for Climate Action, it's 11 members, nine at large, appointed by council, one Minn-American, one University of Iowa. Iowa City residents should be given preference, but their members are not required to have Iowa City residents.
But not required to, okay, okay.
Yep.
I think I like Matthew Walter and the experience that he had on a working group and maybe moving up from that to, to the commission.
Yeah, I was also leaning a little bit toward Matthew Walter as well.
So, it sounded like we have majority and I can certainly support Matthew as well. So, Matthew Walter, we will do them all at the end if that's okay with council?
Is our first Ethan?
So, Matthew.
Matthew. Oh, it's just the one, sorry.
Yeah, it's only one. Yep, so Matthew is just one. All right. We're going to move on to 14B, which is Human Rights Commission. Human Rights Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term effective upon appointment through December 31st, 2023. And council discussion. And this again is just one appointment, no gender balance.
One person that struck my, I mean, there was so many people who applied who were all so well qualified. It would be amazing to be able to appoint them all. But one person that struck me as interesting, but maybe as a fit for HCDC was Kim Gilmore Sr., simply because he was in the working group for housing on the HRC. So, and I know that there are, there'll be openings coming up. So, given how many candidates there are for us to consider, this might be one way to be able to, you know, help with the desire to serve as well as sort of fitting in with a place where he felt that he had a special niche. So, I just, I put that out. I realize that's not where we're at, but just to sort of almost like eliminate and yet not eliminate someone.
Do we know in his application, did he state he also applied?
I do.
For HCDC?
No, he didn't. I don't think he did.
So, I mean, that also might be, it's his prerogative, obviously.
Sure.
I thought Kelsey Paul Shantz looked very impressive. Recommend her for appointment.
That was, I was impressed with her, with her application in part because it would bring, I think, probably an entirely different perspective of international human rights law and constantly working in that and so bringing, having a, having a different overlay.
I was very impressed with her.
I'm hearing a majority. Support. So, Kelsey, is that what I hear?
Sure.
All right. And then Parks and Recs. Item 14C, Parks and Recreation Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term effective upon appointment through December 31st, 2025. Council discussion.
Kelly, I was confused about Steven Byrd's application because his first term was up last November. Did he apply since then and we didn't accept him? He's applying again? I was confused.
I believe that is correct. He termed off and he's applied, he's interested in serving again.
Oh, okay, okay.
He was actually, I think he was the chair of the commission for awhile.
Right. But then he's been off for a few months and now is interested again. Okay.
It looks like the date of his application was November of 2021, so right before his term ended.
Ended, right, right.
Someone who actually stood out to me was Connie Moore. I thought that she had an interesting background that could serve. And of course, I wrote her name down, read the application with interest, but I didn't give myself any notes. So, give me a moment.
I had, I had two stars by her name also Megan and just made note, she's a physical therapist and she's been on the Board of Systems Unlimited and really believes in the needs of the disabled. And she really feels perks, although we're working really hard on getting them all to be inclusive, but she would bring that sort of perspective to the board, which would be interesting.
An expert kind of immediacy to the discussions.
Right.
I also appreciated Mitch Lingos' application for a variety of reasons, sort of multi-generational, dealing with different parks and so forth in the community. I mean, I'm perfectly happy to go with Connie Moore. Just wanted to mention that I thought that was also a very strong application.
Yeah, I was going to say that one also, not to, not to necessarily argue against Connie, but, but just Mitch, as did Mr. Lingos did jump out at me a little bit. The multi-generational sort of aspect was kind of, you know, between his small children, him himself and then his wife's older parents. And that's a newer application, so I think that stays in our, in our mix for awhile then, so.
Yeah, one, one thing about that, when I was thinking about like the Singer Center and some of the missions of its multi-generational efforts, as well as, I mean, that's what our Parks and Rec is, is multi-generational on a lot of level. And so, Mitch did also resonate with me.
I was also, I mean, again, just throwing this name out here for more conversation, but you're in Broege, Broege, Broege? All right. I'm sorry, I'm sure that I butchered that name. But he seems to have a lot of kind of experiential background, you know, that he was with County Parks Maintenance in Wisconsin, Public Park Development in the city of Dubuque. So, it seems to me that, that he also is someone who might be good in the mix. And I'm not sure how the roll-off is working, if there will be other appointments coming up, but he's someone definitely to keep in mind if not for this time.
Yeah, he was on my shortlist also.
Well, we got a lot of shortlists.
I just asked Kelly a process.
Very well qualified people.
Question. When someone's not selected for a commission, do they get any communication from the city? And in that, do we let them know other vacancies or opportunities as we're identifying people who we think might be good for other commissions? Is there any communication that goes to them?
I know it says that, you know, that we'll keep their application on file for a year. I don't know, and it could probably be something that we could either add to the email or the letter, like the link to current vacancies. I can't remember off the top of my head if, if it's already on there or not. If it's not, we could add it.
That might be, or it's something that a counselor who feels strongly could take it upon themselves to get in touch with that person and say, based on what we saw here, we thought you might consider applying for something else.
Mm-hmm.
I'll just, I'll just add Susan Meliker's name as well. I mean, there were, there were so many good applicants, but I was also responded favorably to her comments.
So, I, I'm not exactly sure if I heard majority for Mitch or, and Connie tied, or if I heard majority for Mitch.
I think, for me, I was, I mean, you say kind of like the honorable mention for Mitch. I think Connie also brings that, somebody else had mentioned earlier about the physical therapy aspect of it and that sort of, and I think as we take a look at some of our, it's one of many, many things that will be beneficial to us, I think, as a city as we look at some design issues. I would expect that somebody with that background would have some really keen insights into, you know, those kinds of aspects of accessibility, which, you know, I think just has to be one of our top priorities on, you know, everything we do in a city, so.
I would agree with Sean.
So, you supported Mitch?
No.
No?
Connie.
Connie, okay.
I'm good with Connie.
All right. So, Connie has the majority. So, were you talking about Mitch and then switched to Connie?
I think I was at the end there, yes, yes.
Oh, okay, I was like, I thought I was tracking and then he started talking about ADA and I'm like, well, that's not really.
Nope, nope, I did, I had switched. I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear.
Yes. All right. Now, I'm tracking. All right. So, Connie Moore. All right. We are ready to make appointments. Could I get a motion to appoint to the Human Rights Commission?
Sure. So, I moved that we appoint Matthew Walter to the Climate Action Commission, Kelsey Paul Shantz to the Human Rights Commission, and Connie Moore to Parks and Rec.
Second, Taylor.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Taylor. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 15 is announcements of vacancies previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, July 26th, 2022. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport Zoning Commission, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Public Art Advisory Committee, art or design professional, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Public Art Advisory Committee, art or design professional, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Singer Center Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. We are at item number 15A, announcements of vacancies new. Human Rights Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term effective upon appointment through December 31st, 2024. Or, applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, August 30th, 2022. And correspondence was included in the July 11th late addition. Could I get a motion to accept the correspondence?
So, moved. Second.
Moved by Burgess, seconded by Alter. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 16 is city council information. What are the updates?
I'll jump in. I just want to make everyone here aware that the Truth and Reconciliation Commission had a really, really engaging, productive, good work session on Friday evening because they had in-person visit from Eduardo Gonzalez and David Ragland from Think Peace, who came, who have spoken to the commission before. Janice and I have worked with Eduardo from, since, I don't know, probably August 2020, at the time that we were looking to create the commission. And he's someone with incredible credentials regarding peace efforts throughout the world over a long period of time. So, I don't know if we'll be getting any kind of update on the work session per se, but I do think that there'll be a facilitator proposal forthcoming that is tied to some of the conversation that came from that and their visit to the community. So, it was really excellent opportunity.
May I ask a?
So, does it seem worth, I know we haven't done it with other commissions, but it's allowed, or we do it on occasion, just to invite the TRC at a work session, just to get a sense of where are you now, so that it's not having to wait for a formal proposal and whatnot, just to get a, it's a check-in, quite literally, just to ask them, can you come and talk to us about what you've been doing since?
So, I don't know that we could actually engage in that type of level of conversation.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. That's why I asked the question, whether that's possible or not.
If it was on the work session agenda and there was some type of a report from them, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that was kind of what I was.
But, yeah, we can't engage in that.
So, wait, we cannot or we can?
We can tonight.
No, 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 no.
But you're talking about in the future, right?
Yes, I'm saying at a future work session, would it be possible for us to invite TRC? I'm sorry, I was not clear. To invite the TRC, to give us sort of a check-in, an update of just, here's the work that we've been at, here's where we're going, but allow us to be able to have conversation or whatnot, so that maybe there can be some kind of feedback if necessary or desired or just a check-in before seeing a proposal in its state before us for a vote.
Sure. That would be legally permissible. They would have to notice their meeting as well as yours and so forth, but otherwise that's.
And I guess I'm also, you know, trying to gauge interest from council as well and perhaps it's, you know, not throwing it out there.
I guess at least for me, I think they're having their conversations and so we'll be seeing something soon, but.
I hope they know we're receptive to hearing them. I think that's what you're getting at.
Yeah, that's the bottom line.
It's not a, yeah, it should, exactly. Thank you, Laura.
Yeah, yeah. Any other updates?
Janice and I attended, we don't meet very often, I think it's every three months or so, the, I'll probably get this wrong, Joint Emergency Commission, Communications Commission, JEC, known as JEC Met. And of course, most of the meeting was comprised of talking about the budget, but then they also, it was very important that they gave us information on the upcoming 988 crisis line. And I know we've got an IP in the July 7th, I think, press release on that. It's, it's going to be just a really important thing for persons in crisis or their friends and their family members. And I just can't stress enough to people out there that if you're feeling any sort of distress or sadness, please, please, there are resources out there. The Community Crisis Line works very hard to help people and they have folks 24/7 out there to listen to you. So, please, please seek them out. And once this goes online, 988 on July 16th, you can call directly to that line rather than going through 911 and actually goes through our Community Crisis Center here in Iowa City. So, please, please, keep that in mind.
And they stressed as well, they've stressed as well that this is, this is as Counselor Taylor said, for, you don't have to be in severe crisis. They would like to prevent you from ending up in severe crisis. They have, I think, 100 counselors who will be available to deal with these. So, it's a service we should get used to using.
Great.
I'll just mention that over the last weekend, Project Green had its Open Gardens Tour. There were 31 gardens throughout the Iowa City metro area and I served as a garden host this year. Had no idea what to expect in terms of how many people would show up and what the weather would be like and so forth. The weather was, couldn't have been better. And we had, I don't know how, how it went across the 31 sites, but we had over 300 visitors. So, it was really an impressive event for us and quite enjoyable. And I must say, I was just pleased to see how many people are interested in gardens. There was one visitor who came from Kansas City.
Wow.
So, yeah, it was, it was a great event and thanks to Project Green for sponsoring it and all the sponsors of the event.
So, I'd say that I think there's two more Saturdays for the diversity market and they recently, someone, I wish I could give credit because I don't remember who, but worked very hard and as I said, Kevin Burt was playing last Saturday, Blake Shaw and James Tutton, I believe, Tutson, thank you, they're going to be playing. Just amazing. And each Saturday that you go, there's, you know, regular vendors, but they switch some out, some people take a break, some come in. So, there's something new and vibrant and different each time. The weather has, actually, I'm not even going to talk about the weather because I'll jinx it. Anyway, it's just so much fun. And speaking of, there were actually a couple of the Open Gardens in the South District that were walkable from the diversity market. So, it was just a really cool, wonderful thing and it remains something wonderful to go. And now there's live music in addition to some of the best food that you will eat in the entire city.
Yes.
True.
So, we got to meet with the Mandela Fellas. So, yeah, thanks to Counselor Weiner. They met here in City Hall with a variety of people. And we had some of our staff here. That was great. Our. great. Our Sue Dilik, our Assistant City Attorney, was present with us. We had a great turnout there, fabulous people. And then Mayor Alter joined me at a kind of a welcoming night that the university put on for them. I'll tell you, they were partying in our streets, doing some of the June nineteenth events and our block party. So it was great to see them not only be engaged at the university, doing some of the hard work, which it was pretty intense for some of them. I think they had a business course that was like a crash course within just a few days, and they were up studying quite a bit for that. Nevertheless, thanks to the counselors here that joined me, as well as, it was a great opportunity meeting these individuals. Twenty Thirty Better Together, that came out, you should have received some of that in your packet, counselors, but for the public, Better Together is kind of a conglomerate of people within the Johnson County area that has a vision of to do something collectively between now and twenty thirty, and super excited for these efforts. And we have more to do as a community to get us to some of the initial thoughts and goals. Other than that, any other updates? Item number seventeen is report on items from city staff, our city manager.
I do have one for you tonight, Mayor. It seems like a good idea to update you on the latest with the Johnson County Direct Assistance Program. On April nineteenth, you unanimously passed a resolution authorizing an agreement with Johnson County to supplement their two million dollar direct assistance program with up to one point five million of city funds. That sub-recipient agreement has not been amended and cannot be amended unless it's by this council, so you have not seen that on an agenda, and it remains as was passed on the nineteenth. There were two uses specified for our up to one point five million dollar contribution. One was up to ten percent administrative cost to reimburse the county for their efforts to administer the program, and the second was direct assistance for residents of Iowa City. Today, we got word on the final numbers from the county, and we promoted those through a supplemental press release that we sent out to our audience. I should say, the agreement anticipated after you would subtract out ten percent of administrative funds, that the city's contribution could fund up to nine hundred and sixty-four Iowa City residents that applied and were deemed eligible by the county. Again, that's up to nine hundred and sixty-four. In the county's information that was released today, they indicated that our funds were used to provide an additional four hundred and seventy-two checks to Iowa City residents. This tells me that any resident, or any applicant that was deemed eligible but did not receive funds from the county would not be an Iowa City resident. We will certainly follow up with the county to confirm that based on comments that we heard here this afternoon. But again, if we, if our funds were used to provide direct assistance for four hundred and seventy-two Iowa City residents, and we, through our agreement, had the capacity to fund up to nine hundred and sixty-four Iowa City residents, there should be no Iowa City residents that did not receive the direct assistance. So we will follow up with the county and confirm that, but I'm very sure that we're on the same page with the county. We'll give you a final report after we receive such a final report from the county confirming all the numbers specific to our jurisdiction. That's my only update tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our deputy city manager.
I would just add that I had the opportunity to visit with a couple Mandela Fellas last night. We had a wonderful dinner dinner and very impressive individuals, and they were very, through with the things that we're doing in Iowa City.
Great, great, great. City attorney?
No report tonight, thank you.
All right, city clerk?
I guess I'll just introduce the deputy city clerk, Ashley Platts. You might be seeing a little bit more of her. We're doing some cross-training, so in case I can't be here, she can hop right in and not skip a beat.
Perfect.
I'll come, you're welcome.
Bring some coffee. All right, item number eighteen is adjournment. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved, Weiner.
Second, Taylor.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed at seven to zero. We are adjourned.